...Bartlett Committee of the Hall Meeting for February 2nd, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have in a committee meeting this evening is License and Ordnance Committee. Chairman Erins?
Thank you. Our agenda item this evening is the Volunteer and Board Commission Recognition. And under the -- Trustee Daney suggested that we do something about the recognition of our commission members and has suggested a program. This is -- many of the villages do something to recognize their commissioners. The suggestion that staff has come -- has provided us is at five years, a village pin -- this is just suggestion. At 10 to 35 years, a locally purchased gift card, or 10 years, 75, 15, 100, 20 years, 125, 25, and so on. At this time -- oh, and we did receive a list of those that would affect. So I will open this up to discussion, or if staff wants to take this over, please do.
I don't think we have anything to add, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I want to add one thing. I know that -- I want to thank staff for the effort they put forth in this. I don't know what's going to happen this evening, but sitting here looking at this proposed plan that we have, I want to commend you on the efforts, both you and Paula. I think you did an outstanding job. I know we looked at numerous different options that we had, and I think that some of the feelings that we had, you know, we had different opinions, and I think that this meets them all. So I want to thank you very much. Also want to add that I think the commissioners that serve this village do an outstanding job. I've had the pleasure of working with some of the commissioners for the past 34 years, and I think it's about time that the village, you know, steps up and recognizes these people for the services that they provide. They take time to come to the meetings. It's time away from their family, and the diligence that they put forth in researching the projects that are before them, I think are to be commended also. So I don't have a problem with this. I would move this along, and that's my man on that.
Anybody else?
I think it's a great idea.
I do, too, but I think rather than I would shy away from -- I don't know if this is what you meant, but a locally purchased gift card at 35, 10 to 35 years. Are these the amounts you're suggesting on the gift card, or is this cash?
It would be the amounts on the gift cards, not cash.
Okay, good. Okay, I just want to make sure, because I think we'd get into trouble if we gave cash.
No, the intent was a gift card.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, one last thing, that after my years of service, I'll expect my gift cards in the mail.
Yeah, right. Okay.
You've got a little --
Then we'll have staff draw this up, and we will vote on it at the next board meeting.
Ask one question, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sure.
Do we give anything to our commission members that just served one term?
I beg your pardon?
Do we just -- do we give anything to our commission members that just serve one term?
When they retire, if they are long-term commission members, we usually have a vaser bowl that has the village logo on it, and we give them a gift when they retire.
Okay.
And of course, they're all invited to the Christmas party every year.
I don't know that we really have to move this on to a board meeting, do we? Can't we just straw poll this and put it into effect?
That's fine.
Is that okay to -- Trustee Erins?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
We'll go ahead and take a straw poll. If the clerk can just call the roll.
Okay. Trustee Erins?
I think it's a great idea.
Cammerer?
I'm on board. I think it's good.
Carbonaro?
Yep.
Daney?
Absolutely.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our license and ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Erins. Final item we have this evening is --
Oh, excuse me.
Yes?
What did -- what did Trustee Cammerer just say? I couldn't hear him.
Something about a board.
He can't hear either. He moved over to --
That's right.
TL.
I'm going to have to talk to the American Disabilities Association.
Trustee Erins, he said he wanted to split the gift cards with me.
Uh-huh.
Uh-huh. Okay.
All right. Final item we have this evening under the Committee of the Hall Meeting is the Police and Health Committee. Chairman Carbonaro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, Mr. Mark Bushouse, president of Williams Architects, will be presenting a review of the policy facility space needs analysis and facility evaluation and option study conducted by his firm. Mr. Bushouse?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm Mr. Mark Bushouse. I'm the president of Williams Architects. Our firm has been around for over 41 years. I've been there almost 29 years, so I'm getting used to the place. And our firm does a lot of municipal work. Firstly, I've been involved with dozens of municipal master planning projects. I'm currently involved in Woodridge, planning their police facility, in Morton Grove with their police facility, let's see, in Downers Grove with their police facility. So this is something that our firm does on an ongoing basis. And I'm currently doing a number of them at this time. Thank you. So what we want to do tonight is go over a bit the board memo that was in your packets, review the work that we've been doing with your staff, and discuss, you know, what this whole study is about, what the process is, we've been going through, what the findings are at this time. We have some recommendations, and then we have some questions for you folks to discuss and give us direction, because we have one more important part of this planning project we have yet to do, and we would like your input and direction to help guide us in that. So to talk about what this study is about specifically is to review the police department and determine what its long-term space needs are, you know, how big this building really should be to support your police department, and also to review the condition of the building itself, what are we dealing with here, and then to explore and find the best option for how we can meet the long-term needs of your department, whether it means an addition, remodeling, or even a replacement, if that's what the board would be so inclined to choose. So that's the point of the study we've been doing. So let's talk briefly about the process. The first part of the process is a sort of foundational part of this, and that's the space needs. How much of a building does your department need to operate and conduct this business and do its services and have places for all the people that work there currently and are expected to work there? This was done in a very methodical way. First, we talked with staff about the size of Bartlett, the population you have, where that's going to be going in the future, and its impact on the police department staffing, what that will mean. So once we got that figured out, we also toured some other facilities. We toured three stations together, though I know your department has toured other buildings as well. But we toured the Streamwood Department, the Hanover Park Police Department, and the Skokie Police Department. So with that, that was one of the space needs analysis. Next, we also reviewed the condition of the existing police station. So our senior architects, my partner, Scott Lang, who actually is a resident of Bartlett, taking this project very personally, went out and reviewed the facility, also with our civil engineers and our team of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers. That whole team reviewed the drawings that you have for the building, talked to your staff and those that are maintaining it, walked through the building, looked it over, looked at the equipment and systems, and then wrote up some reports that I believe are in your board packet. So a very careful analysis of the building that you currently have there. And then, next, we got into -- with that information of the space needs and the condition of your building, we explored a few options to provide the kind of space that your police department needs on the current site. So that was sort of the, I'll say, the boundaries of what we were to look at at the first part of this study. So we looked at a few options, talked with staff about it, and I believe we've got the one that, as a team, we think is the best advised of the group, though again, we want your input. And then, next, with your -- what we'd like to do tonight is go over that option, talk about what some of the considerations are, and then see if the board has any other options that you'd like us to explore, because our goal here, again, is to be sure we've looked at appropriate options that could really help the police department. And then, we would design these in very simple terms, sort of site planning kind of things, and we would put budgets to those, and then we'll come back in the very near future, go over those concepts with you, and talk about the budgets that it would take to get those projects done. So that's the process we've been through. So now let's talk about the findings. What have we discovered with this process we've worked with? Well, first of all, that your current population of Bartlett, about 41,700, and that's expected to grow into the upper 40,000, is it 46, 47, 48, 49,000, something like that, over the next two to three decades. And also, when we did our tours, it was very apparent that the Hanover Park and the Streamwood police facilities were really the best comparable communities and police stations for us to look at and think about as it could guide us for Bartlett. The Hanover Park Police Department, that's about a 63,000 square foot facility, and Streamwood's is about a 51,000 square foot facility. And as we talked about, we also looked at staffing, and the police department looked at their staffing, looked at the projected growth that's being talked about here in population, and evaluated that its current staff of 77 may very well need to grow to approximately 105 staff, again, in that same timeframe of two to three decades. Therefore, the existing building, which has about 22,900 square feet, is currently, in our professional opinion, significantly inadequate already to meet the needs that they have today. And then, as your community could grow another 10-plus percent, it just increases that problem. Therefore, we believe the new facility should be approximately 53,500. That would put it slightly larger than Streamwood, but still about 10,000 square feet smaller than the Hanover Park facility. So that gives us sort of the baseline of the kind of building we think we need of 53,500. So let's talk about now, and again, if you have questions along the way, jump in, but if you want to get through this, and then you can pepper away. We did, as our team, I said, we went through and evaluated the facility, and you see a little summary here in that the exterior walls of the police station are generally in good condition. However, the windows have certainly are showing wear and damage from years of use. And the roof, though functioning fine now, certainly is reaching the years when it's going to need to be replaced. And the interior is very well maintained. You need to give credit to your staff in that they are certainly putting time and effort into making sure they repair all the dings and dents that happened, and they're keeping it painted, and they're taking very good care of it. However, with this many years of use, there are still areas of finishes that are getting worn and certainly very outdated. Probably the area that has the most concern we have for the facility and for the village is its heating and cooling systems. They are original to the building. They are past, and it says here, but they really are past their life, normal lifespan, and staff is working hard to keep them in some level of operational order, yet there is continued problems with maintaining a reasonable comfort in the building. So those systems really are even past the point when total replacement is really advised. Also, the emergency generators provide electricity in power outages. It's still functional, but it is inadequate. It is only sized to run a very small portion of the facility, and in today's day and age, the idea that in a power outage, that your police department could not be fully operational is a prospect that none of our clients in the last 10 or 15 years have been willing to accept. They have all provided generators that will completely power their police facilities to run normally when the power goes out, because they are usually one of the busiest groups in the village. Next, your lighting system is, again, it's older systems. The lights are inefficient. In fact, the energy codes have rapidly changed in Illinois over the last number of years, and you really are supposed to have lighting fixtures that are significantly more efficient, and even more importantly, they're supposed to be all automatic. These are motion sensors. They are designed to turn the lights off when you leave rooms, and they do have a significant effect on lowering power demand, and in today's codes, any space that you would remodel, you have to put these new lighting systems in. So they are -- the energy codes have been pushing very hard to make buildings significantly more efficient. So all of that leads to, yes, you know, significant space is needed. Many of the building systems are at the point where replacing them or significantly upgrading them is advisable. And one question that came up in talking with staff, that was sort of the last piece of questions before we would go and design, is the question of can we simply add a second floor to the building? And as it says in the memo, the building was not designed to allow a second floor to happen. Therefore, we would have to start in the ground and put in bigger footings, add new columns, build an entirely new structure for the second floor. Of course, that means tearing off the entire roof structure that is there now, and once you do that, you basically peel the roof off the building, and all of the building systems that are connected to it go with it, and you pretty much have exposed the inside of the building to the elements while you're working. That means you end up completely gutting the inside of your building and building a new structure over the one you have. The long way of saying it's not cost-efficient. None of our clients have ever chosen that path when we've done a more detailed cost analysis, because they just didn't get any good return on their money, unless there was some other historic aspect to the building that was just, they had to save it. None of them ever have. It's just not a good economic way to go. So with all of that information, then, we took some time and looked at the site, and just to, again, you folks know your site well, but what we have here is the current police stations in this area. They have patrol and secure parking behind it to the north. You have a visitor parking lot, pretty good size between the police and the village hall where we are. There is some visitor -- there's good staff parking behind village hall for them. Currently, a lot of police staff have to park up and down Oak Street, because there really isn't enough staff parking today. In the bigger context, of course, you have railroad, Main Street, the barns, again, some commercial buildings along railroad, residential to the west, to get past the water tower, more residential to the south. What we really looked at initially is what can we do within the confines of the property the village currently owns, knowing that we don't want to affect the village hall, we don't want to cross property lines with approach we've been taking? So here's the concept, and again, this is a larger image, we'll zoom in a bit, but in this case, just to give you the bigger sense of what we're doing. We're staying within the confines of the property that you own. In fact, I'm going to go to the next slide and zoom in a little bit here. And what we have looked at is, one of the big challenges of building on a tight site like this is how do we get you the facility you need while trying to keep your police in operation? There are cases where you have to ask your police department to completely move off-site while you build, then they move back, but there's a lot of money spent doing things like that. So we looked at several options, and this is one of the ones that allowed the police to stay here and operational. So the idea here is, we're going to come in in the main parking lot, and we're going to build a three-level facility. That's a basement and two levels above grade, which houses offices and all the place where staff typically works. And that's located such that the existing building can remain where it is and stay operational while the construction is going on. Once that is complete, the police can move into this, and then we could go and start working on the existing building. There's a good section of it that we can reuse and remodel, but there's also a piece that we're going to have to cut off and demolish. But what that does is allows us to create a flow-through visitor parking lot between Main Street and Oak Avenue, and right now, the visitor lot has about 52 parking spaces out here. This concept allows that to increase to 63, and believing that since we're increasing, we're certainly making the situation even better than it is now, and will substantially support visitor needs to the two facilities. Once, then, of course, we would remodel the sections here, build onto it, and even add a small garage for some of the patrol vehicles. We would look to retain this northern lot to be the secure parking for patrol and other police vehicles. That would work well for them. However, there's a missing piece of the puzzle, is that on this land area, you would continue to struggle to provide enough staff parking for your police employees. And we do recommend that if this is an approach the board ultimately would like to pursue, that some conversation and investigation be done to see if there's some air, some land nearby that possibly could hold some parking for staff, because we would need a minimum of 65, and we'd like to have more like 90 parking spots for your police department staff. Right now, it's quite inconvenient for them to be up and down Oak Street and other areas. So this concept has some good things going for it, the one I mentioned about keeping the police in operation as we build, but it also allows the police station to have a very good presence now on Main Street. And that into that building could be the main front lobby, it could be the training room, meeting areas, so that could be a more glassy kind of facade and architecture to create a good presence and nighttime glow toward the street, so folks in town can know that's the police department. They know where it is. It's not at the back of the parking lot anymore. It's a very good and easy thing to find. And it also maintains the campus between village hall and police, both sharing the same visitor parking lot, so some good efficiencies would be continued there. So again, this had the most pluses of the concepts that were explored with staff, and it really does appear to be a viable solution. All that said, we do want to open up to you, the board, and see if there's any other options or concepts and land use that you might find interesting that you'd like our team to explore. Like I said, we'll explore those concepts, we'll do diagrams like these, and we'll come back, and we'll have a budget for each approach, so you can compare the pluses and minuses of each idea, and basically where the dollars would end up. With that, I'll look for any questions you might have.
I have a question for you. The village, been in the village for a good number of years, and I have some concern regarding, you know, some of the buildings in our downtown area, and one of the buildings has been vacant for some time. You know which one I'm talking about?
I do.
Yeah, has there been any discussion about maybe trying to, I'd hate to see that demolished, because it has so much history, you know, to me and the village. However, I think that it's on a path that it may not, I, let me rephrase that, I don't like the path that I see it going on at this point in time. And I'm wondering, has there been any discussion about that?
At this level, we have not. Not that that isn't a good idea, something we could consider, but we have not to date.
Yeah, and if that were the case, how much additional parking could that be for staff? And would that even be adequate at that specific location and have the people walk? You know, I don't even know.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that.
Okay.
And also, look at, that's, you know, prime commercial up there, and, you know, do we want to take it up with parking lots when there may be a better site or sites that we should consider at the same time?
Why would we want to do this?
I can hear you.
I can't hear you, Ray. Don't answer that yet, please. Why would we want to do this? Would it be better to repair the old building, or does that put us in a different position when we start to repair stuff that it's going to cause more problems down the line? That's three questions. I got one more. I'm not sure where that building is coming out in the front. Is that going more towards Main Street?
This building, again, this is just a blocked out to show you how many square feet is necessary, but this here is proposed to be the eastern edge of the building. It would be just slightly closer to Main Street than the Fireman's Barn.
Okay, okay.
So the question about can we reuse the existing building? We did look at a concept that saved the building basically where it was, but it did require us to add a second floor on it and build around it, and the cons of that were, we really doubt it's going to save you money, and it also means your entire police department has to move off-site to temporary quarters for about a year and then move back again. And we're concerned that renting space, moving your police department into a temporary facility has some significant dollars cost to it, and of course, could be significantly disruptive to their work efforts.
Okay. We also have a building just to the north of the new police station, a little farther down, the fire barn.
Oh, the fire, oh, there, right.
I thought we had some discussion about possibly using that as a land acquisition and also a thoroughfare between Oak and Main.
Vince, really, we're having a tough time hearing you. Honesty, I'm sorry.
The fire barn was a topic of discussion as far as a land acquisition, so that we can possibly use that as a thoroughfare between Oak and Main for emergency vehicles?
Right. Certainly, if the board wanted us to look at some concepts that incorporated that land area, we could certainly do so, and I'm sure any time you add any more property to the land, we can look at for this, for this police station. It's going to help us with more options that might be interesting. So if the board wants us to explore options that would use that land area, just give us, say the word.
Well, I think that, you know, I appreciate the plan that you've shown us. As it's currently configured, I don't see how it would work. So if the fire barn, which is in pretty rough shape, but it's used by the community, so it doesn't have its own parking, usually uses the village hall parking, which you're shifting away from the fire barn. So as it currently stands, I don't see that lot or that, this plan, working very well. I'm also concerned of how it's going to look and function. It is prime downtown real estate. We want to have, be very sensitive to the aesthetics and functionality. Want to make sure the cops are visible, but at the same time, you know, we have traffic issues down there. I think what, you know, I'd echo Trustee Carbonaro's thoughts, and Trustee Daney, let's see if we can expand the scope of where we'd like to look to expand. Obviously, I think it's a good idea to keep the police station close, if not touching the village hall. I don't think we want to divorce. That would be a bad plan institutionally. I think we should also remain committed to a building that's not going to be crumbling in 25 years. I think this should be a 50-year build. So whatever we do, let's do it right, and let's open up our search some.
Would that include looking at other land area or other available properties around downtown? Is that what you're advocating?
Sure. Well, I think we need to be as flexible as we can be.
Okay.
I would be interested in knowing if it had been contemplated about possibly utilizing the land that we have currently as a parking for the police vehicles, and looking at options for off-site parking of the police vehicles as well.
Usually, the police vehicles, you want to have immediately adjacent to or even parked within the building itself, so you can control the security of those vehicles and equipment and firearms that they're moving back and forth from the building. So it's a departments we work with, that's a pretty high priority, have that just right there, and they're, they like to have staff as close as they can, but that's not as much of a security issue to have them walk a little bit.
Like across the street?
Across the street would be acceptable, yes.
I think that sort of falls in the category of looking at the potential expansion of the boundaries of the facility.
Okay.
So I'm understanding this properly in different phases, because I have a tendency to like having the police department right there. It doesn't look good now, because it's just a rectangular box.
Right.
I think it would, I can vision that it would be very nice looking driving past it.
Yes.
I like the concept of being able to see it as you're driving down the road. But you're talking about getting rid of the walkway, right, in between here would be phase one?
Yeah, there wouldn't be a physical --
And then there'd be a drive-through between here for a while?
Drive-through parking lot.
I don't see how that would ever happen with so much construction going on.
Well, they would just do it a phase at a time. They would build this piece, and, you know, temporarily, we'd have to probably diminish the parking available to the public while you're in this construction mode and ask and look at for other places for the public to park, certainly. And of course, if you did bring any other land into the possibilities here, and that afforded some parking land, we would get that up and running as quickly as we could to, again, provide -- could to, again, provide places for cars to go as we're really getting into the construction. But after this phase is complete, we could demo part of the existing police station and allow this parking lot to happen very quickly after that, so you would get back to, or even more parking than you have now.
I think what we would do is, we have done with other construction, we would move the staff parking behind the Village Hall here, totally off-site. Go behind the bank, there's plenty of, of parking spaces, other places downtown that doesn't hurt our commercial efforts, and make that whole parking lot behind us for people visiting the Village Hall.
Well, you know, when the construction starts, I'm sure, you know, they'll be able to work that out. And, you know, I'm wondering if we're, we're getting a little down the road, I, I think that what we had talked about, maybe seeing if we could acquire more property at this point in time, if that were viable, if that were viable avenue for us to pursue. And then as far as the details of how the construction would go and how the traffic would flow, yeah, do that.
I think that would be a very good thing, to see if we can find a bigger piece of property, because it feels like we're just packing a lot of stuff in here.
It is, it is very tight, I'm not.
Does this figure in any underground parking or anything?
Underground parking, again, can be done, but it, it is very expensive, and we're really trying to approach this with the idea that we're, we're trying to do things in a more economical way.
You'd have to have stormwater detention also.
Yes, in all likelihood, we'd be talking about some permeable paver areas to somewhat lower our stormwater requirements, coupled with some underground storage tanks that you can put in.
Part of the, part of the concern I also have is that we have a, historically have had issues with our downtown area. And the parking in front of the Village Hall currently is at least accessible to the people and the businesses. And now, if we start making a breezeway through here, there may be more parking spaces, but now you're putting people further and further away from the downtown section as well, and I'm concerned about how that's going to affect the businesses and getting people to it. The parking's just not optimal in that downtown area. And we may be increasing it, but if you have to walk all the way from Hickory to the front, will people do it?
I would have to agree with Trustee Cameron on that aspect.
I can, I can see people trying to bypass the, the stoplight by speeding through the, the village parking lot.
You think?
Right, well, I mean, we've all heard that.
Do it now.
Yeah, but it's, it's a lot easier when it's a straight shot.
One of the things that we challenged the architect to was to see if there was some way to increase some additional parking for Town Center, who has wanted to have more parking out front as a part of our facility, if there was enough extra, that we didn't feel we needed for our day-to-day visitors or the police department, that we could have out there that they could benefit from. And that's something I think we have still to accomplish.
Could we put some cost estimates together to find out how much it would cost to actually move the police station off-site and demolish, you know, the police station that's there, and maybe put a three-story building right there so the parking is still up front on Oak Avenue?
We certainly could do that, yes.
I think that, if, if we do keep it on-site, if that, if we do go that route, I think that would be a feasible option, because you still have the parking, the, the people that use the fire barn can still have parking, people that visit the downtown that park at the Village Hall, they could still use it, so.
I'm assuming that we own the property that we're putting that yellow triangle on? Yellow rectangle?
Yeah, yeah, this is property you own, right.
So if we move off-site, we're going to have to acquire some property.
Right, that was one of the, the sort of boundaries of the beginning of this process, was to say, let's stay on the land you currently own. And we needed input from you folks to say, well, do we, do we expand that a little bit? And I guess what I'm hearing tonight is there's discussion about looking at the fire barn site, also, maybe not, okay, but also looking at the option of tearing down the police station in its entirety and building in pretty much the same location so we maintain that front parking lot. So those are two that are being at least mentioned.
So from shovel to roof, what are we talking about, six months, a year?
From what timing? I'm sorry.
From shovel to roof?
Oh, no, it's over a year to build a police station, more like fourteen.
That is going to inconvenience the parking situation.
You've made mention that you've worked with other communities and their police facilities?
Yes.
What was their cost estimates?
Um.
And are they similar to what?
Hannover Park was seven million, I think, to build that thing over there.
No, I think it was more than that.
Or square foot?
Well, right now, the other police stations were planning, when you put all costs in except site, and this is furniture, consultants, soil testing, I mean, it's trying to be that turnkey number, they're averaging plus or minus four hundred dollars a square foot. And there's a significant, again, you buy all-new furniture, you, you know, consultants like us aren't, well, we're a good deal, we like to think, but we're not cheap. And, you know, and there's moving, and, and there's a lot of pieces that happen, but yeah, they're not cheap. Wiring range, right, well, that's part of that. So that gives you some idea of the kind of dollars we, we could be in the range of.
Well, if, if we did move the police department temporarily, so, so Chief, you're, you're talking about then, you'd have to have a secured structure, and I'm assuming cameras, and you're going to have the evidence locker, and, so you would have to, if we did find a site, you know.
It's a mess.
It would be a mess to improve it to the point where you could actually use it and comply with best practices. Is that?
That's entirely accurate, yeah. Quite frankly, personally, we can do whatever the board directs us to do, and we'll make it, we'll make it work the best we can, but it, quite frankly, it's a nightmare. Yeah, it's, it's difficult, it's expensive, it's, and it's security issues and usability issues, but we, towns have made it work, but it's usually very expensive, and it's, it's a rough year, to say the least.
Because it would be nice to be able to use the existing site. I mean, it'd be great to do that.
Right.
And would it be more expensive to tear down the building completely, or to actually do what we talked about, you said, putting in pylons and, and actually building around the existing building?
It would probably be ever so slightly cheaper to work around and reuse the existing building shell. However, we're going to have to make some real compromises on building layout, because we, we have to deal with where those walls are and the basic structure of what you have there today. And the fact that it only has a partial basement, not a full basement, do we, do we dig under the existing building now and try to get more square footage there? That's even more expensive than, than anything you could do, so we, we probably would say no to that one. So I'm not saying no, but you can tell that there are, my hesitation is this is not inexpensive, and there are some real downsides to doing that.
We're approaching twenty million dollars.
Yes.
Based on the cost you gave us.
Could be.
At one point, we were talking about these lots that are west of, on Oak Street, right, for parking. Now that I'm looking at this, it'd be pretty inconvenient for staff parking over there. Obviously, the back of the building is much easier. And they don't seem feasible, from what I'm hearing tonight, even to use as police parking, because you want the vehicles in a secure area.
Well, this plan has the police vehicles tucked up against the building here.
Right, but at one point, the, the lots just west of there, we were talking about.
Here, this area? Somewhere in there. Is it too far? It's hard to say what is too far, but is it, is it farther than other communities have done? No, it's not.
Are we talking about the actual police vehicles or the police employee vehicles?
Police employees parking their personal vehicle.
And you could open it up for more parking for downtown.
But it's right across the street. I mean, there, there are ways to secure that and, and have it still very, very close.
Yeah, I, I get, I would say, many towns have, have found that distance to be acceptable.
Does it make any sense at all to build an addition onto the Village Hall to the south? Do we have any space on the south side?
This area here, it's a pretty narrow slot, then you've got your water tower right there, and that's, those are hard to move, there's a lot of pipes coming up to them.
Is that going to stay?
No, the, it's, it will not. We're going to cap that well off and.
So we could use that, we could use that for parking?
Water tower.
Okay, because I thought that there was some discussion about moving the pumping station.
Yeah. The pump station to the south in the reservoir would stay, the wellhouse to the north where the proposed police station will go away.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, here.
Right.
That's being relocated.
That's being abandoned eventually, right?
Okay.
Well, the options are, we could look at a little larger footprint here, maybe the Fireman's Barn if you wanted us to, we could look at some land across Oak Street, plausibly best use might be parking for staff. Beyond that, if there's other property around this that you'd like us to consider, we certainly would. If you're interested in having us look at another site that might be close to downtown, we could do that as well.
Okay, Dan, I, I didn't understand your answer, the pump that's to the south?
Right there, the pump.
Uh, farther.
Here?
Yeah.
There's the, to the south of Village Hall.
Yeah, are we going to keep that?
Right now, it's currently planned to stay, but that, that is all up to, I mean, if it makes sense to put the police station to the south, I mean, that could be looked at, we would just have to replace that somewhere else in the system.
I was thinking about parking, but that, that's an option as well.
Right. Right now, it's currently, based on what Burke has done with the cost estimates, that facility to the south of Village Hall would remain in place. But the wellhouse to the north of Village Hall would go away.
Okay, so we have some room there. I, I concur with what you just said, so we have some options to possibly look into other land acquisitions as well.
Chief, what's the future of police work look like, you know, in general terms? In general business ideas, right, people are trying to get less office space, and less people working in offices and more people working remotely. Is that something that you're foreseeing? I mean, are we, I, I, when you say our, our population is going to increase here, I mean, it's limited, because we have limited space. I mean, it's going to be very limited.
Can I, can I say something first before you do?
Yeah.
I'll just say, police departments are sort of.
Let me, let me caveat that, I've seen some of these police departments go up, and they're giant, and I walk into them, and nothing is, there's nobody ever there. Like, very rarely used, and they've got these big boardrooms, and, and I'm not saying that this is what this would be, but I think we want to, being as we have such a small area, we probably want to be really smart about this.
I'll say, police departments are probably the, the leaders in municipal government as far as mobile employees.
Yeah.
And use of technology. They, they have been paving the way and showing the other municipal departments around that we work with, how to do, how to do that, and they've done that very effectively. However, police departments have, as you would understand, some specialized things that happen there. You have to lock people up, and you, those rooms have to be built a certain way, and you really shouldn't use them for anything else. And they have gun ranges, that again, you don't really want to use a gun range for something else during the off-times. And they have interview rooms and so on, that all become very active when certain things happen, and they're less active during day-to-day when most of the officers are out on the street, which is where you want them most of the time, is out on the street. So the balance for a police department is to have enough specialized spaces to support them well, and with the particulars of what they do and, and those events, but still looking for opportunities to share spaces when they can. And I, I think your department and the programming we've done certainly is doing a lot of that.
Way too much.
And however, again, police departments are what they are, and when you arrest somebody, you, you, there's no other place to take them, it has to be exactly what it has to be. So, again, working with multiple departments, this is a question that we're, we're talking a lot about, for good reason. I think on the administrative and record side, the more electronic they get, they have fewer paper records, which is helping them with spaces. They are also looking at smaller personal workspaces, but maybe some more flexibility in where they sit, so that they, they don't need as many big offices and less nesting, as they would call it today, we do nest into a space. Then one last item we're working with the police department, and they've been very encouraging on, is the idea of approaching how we do locker rooms a bit differently, which does also save some space and, and makes it pretty much unisex in how we approach lockers and, and private changing rooms. So, I, your department's definitely with, out in front with everybody else, that's good.
I noticed in here, it said something about the size of lockers, increasing them, are, ours like really small right now?
Yeah, they're very small, and they're really not useful, but they're, we make best of things. And again, we are, like Mark said, he's challenging us, we're challenging him to be as cutting-edge as we can, and to find multiple-use space so that we can stay here and make this footprint work. That being said, I can just use an experiential exercise that just happened last week, we had an armed robbery in town where there were multiple suspects and victims that needed to be interviewed and witnesses, and police departments are crisis-driven, some part of, part of the day, they're a ghost town, guys are out in the street doing what they do, and then the crisis happens, and we need to rally and bring community members in and witnesses and, and suspects, and sometimes that's multiple suspects. And that requires square footage in order to do it effectively and bring these things to successful resolutions. We just simply don't have that. We have suspects meeting victims in hallways and hearing, overhearing conversations in the, in the room next door. You have victims crying, and you have witnesses hearing that and becoming upset, and we're just on top of each other. And it, it just doesn't work, and I know you know that, but I can tell you that we are doing everything we can to stay here and make this work for the village, and use space as cutting-edge as we can. Try, try and be, try, think out of the box and, and be cutting-edge as we can.
Good to know. What is the downside to moving off, away from the village?
That, that, well, I can turn that over to the manager, but I can also direct this to you. That, that, that's a policy decision by the board, and, and that's your commitment. Do you want us downtown, or do you want us to find a piece of property? That, that's a viable, that's a viable question that we have not allowed Mark to explore, because he's been challenged to make this work here, until further direction. If, if he were to hear, let's explore. He just hasn't been challenged to do that at this point.
I think it'd be interesting to have somebody explain the ups and downs of having him close. I know Hannover completely remoted theirs, clear on the outside of their village, which I like the fact that this is generally in the middle, you know, you have access to most parts of the town, but I'd like to see the ups and downs of next to Village Hall and away from Village Hall.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too.
Well, we, we certainly can do that. I think when you start from a blank slate, it's going to be more cost-effective to build a building. My concern, as I've said before with that, would be to take the police department out of downtown, I think would be not a good idea, given the amount of people that we have coming down here and working down here, and those are some of our goals for keeping people down here. The other thing we have to keep in mind is that this facility will be tax-exempt, so as we're putting it out there in some area that maybe is commercial or something, we are taking land off the tax rolls, and, and we have to think about that as well.
We have to actually, actually realize we already have a viable twenty-two thousand square foot building that still works. So I think you've done a good job of making sure we can still use it, which, that, that saves a ton of money, so.
A quick comment on police departments and village halls being co-located. Smaller communities really do suffer if you spread them out and pull them away from each other, from the towns I've worked with. As communities get larger and larger, the police department's functions become increasingly robust, and they're having more and more security things happening on the backside of their building. And at some point, as towns get large enough, there is a concern that they are bringing enough police activity near the Village Hall, and, and there's enough special things happening at a police department that most municipalities at some point decide to, to separate them. Now, what is the size of a community that chooses to do that is, well, there you go. So, clearly Bartlet's not at that level.
Not most.
Okay, I'm thinking, like Naperville, Rockford, towns that get very large, it becomes more of an issue.
Okay, so just for clarification, we're going to explore the idea of possibly land acquisition to take the rectangular thing and shift it. We acquire the fire barn, that was one of the things that I heard this evening. Shift it over, have plenty of parking at that point, then explore other sites. And then also, I heard, attempting to demolish the police department where it's at now and rebuild it right, right on the same footprint. That's what I heard.
I heard too.
Who's the others?
I think also looking to the south of Village Hall and seeing how feasible that is. Obviously, the water lines going in there, it's going to be a, it's going to be a project, but if you could put together some costs for that.
Would you build on the water treatment areas, or further south than that?
Yeah, either build there or parking, or whatever you think, you're the expert.
I, I, I would, I would go further south.
Yeah.
And, and I think what we need to do is, we need to exhaust every possibility in the downtown before we start thinking about separating the police station, locating it on a different site. I mean, really, we, we can't leave any stone unturned.
I agree.
I, I think it's important to keep the Village Hall and, and the police station together. I.
I don't even, I don't even think we should take, spend any money looking at that concept until we have the results of what we're looking at now. I agree, I think, you know, we have to keep it right.
And is it, is it a viable option, while we're talking about trying to stay on-site, to do something, or to think of incorporating whatsoever going on in the basement area of this building? I mean, it seems to me, I've only been down there once, but...
It's pretty scary.
Pretty big space, with, with, I guess there's things in it, but I don't know how that would work.
I could see having some archive or other storage that the police department might be able to use, but only sporadically, it could, it could be acceptable, I just, we really haven't reviewed if there really is any available. I know you have your own archives here.
I thought they were using that now for evidence storage in some areas, is that correct?
Okay, they already are, there you go.
It's got moldy down there.
Circuits supply.
Okay, surplus supply.
And how, how big is, how big is the basement area, do we know?
So, it's all?
Yeah. Any idea?
Maybe it's smaller.
Is it a full basement?
Is it all from here, all the way back?
And we have, we have different areas where departments store, a lot of agents that are locked.
And so, if, if, if we did do demolition, is it feasible that the police department could be moved in the basement area temporarily? I mean, it would be, be like putting, being in a dungeon, but you know, it would be some place that we could consider...
I, I would call that as feasible as moving anywhere else, yeah, we could look at that.
Isn't that where we have our emergency, where we went into the emergency area? Yeah, our emergency command post. Speaking of emergency command posts, couldn't you guys just move into the big RV for a while?
It'd be a little tight, but we could try.
I think another good idea would be putting maybe, put a questionnaire on our, our homepage, on our website, and open it up to the public, and see if we just get some comments, and maybe they're good, maybe they're bad, but just to see what kind of input we get from residents, because I know it's, for some residents, it's very difficult around 7:00 to come to a public meeting and, and address us, so, pretty easy.
Want to ask for input on things that might not be feasible, though?
No, just if they have any ideas.
Oh, okay.
If they...
Austin, Austin, I just wanted to say, oftentimes, when we ask the public for input, and don't use any of it, they're disenfranchised, and I, I think this is of such great importance that perhaps we should let our, um, our, our experts do their job, and, and I think we can come up with as much, as many questions as other people, so I think we should wait on that, actually, sorry.
Just to piggyback that a little bit, I think what we could do is, once we get comfortable with the site, and that you're comfortable with the site, we could have Mark do a more detailed study of what it actually looks like, and then, when it actually, and we can articulate what that is, and why it works, then we could open it up for a community review. I, I think that could be useful.
I just don't want to get too far along, and some residents don't even know what we're talking about, and then they're like, I didn't even know we're putting a $30 million police station in downtown, and that, I think, would really upset residents, so I think just making them aware of what we're doing is...
Absolutely.
I think we'll have an article on our website, a few days from now, talking about the board's discussion.
That would be great, thank you.
We'll do that.
Good. So, we're trying to get the list of what we're going to look at, I, I haven't heard complete consensus here on, on all the ideas, so I, I'd like to be sure we're clear on what we go draw, and frankly, what we don't go draw, so when we come back, I'm not getting a bunch of furrowed brows going, what in the world did you go and do, Mr. Architect, so...
Well, if you need a list, I guess we can put that together. Number one, the one thing I've heard that everybody was talking about was additional land acquisition, right? You have that?
Okay, if you got the list, then, then I have it.
You have the list? Okay. Yeah, okay, we're fine.
Never mind, Valerie's got it, I'm just...
She's on top of things.
As, as we talk about the land acquisition, would it be possible to at least envision what it would take to put the, a new addition in that L-shaped area to the north, where the police vehicles are parked, with the thought of potential, potentially putting secure parking maybe across the street, even for police vehicles?
Sir, we can look at that.
And is there, this is a really remote thought, but is there any objectives that would consider moving another story onto this building?
Haven't looked at, I, again, I don't know that this building is designed to have another floor added on.
That's what I would want to know, yeah.
I think we're back to the same aspect, if we got to tear the roof off a village hall now, and kind of mess up village hall badly.
Just part of it.